To the flag of the United States of America and the true republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need a motion to approve our agenda. Second?
Second.
We'll let Carl have his second.
He's not even meaning to get it.
Alright, then we need a motion to approve our minutes, which are back on March twenty eighth. Do I have a motion for those?
I'll make a motion, I didn't see anything when I heard them the first time.
Chris, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Rick, all in favor?
Aye.
Nobody in the public or general public concerns?
I do.
Not on the agenda?
No.
Okay, you're up.
Thank you for the opportunity, this is on Drainage District Two, got the thing in the mail the other day. Uh, I had discussed this earlier with my district guy, this is Weaver, section nine that we're concerned about. I talked to Carl Mattis about this and then I talked with Rick Hopper. He agreed with it, said he'd take care of it, but it was never taken care of it, and it's the boundary waters. I have an eighty acres and there's forty-two plus acres into this district. It is not supposed to be in that, and I'll give you a map on it, so you know where it's at. And those, I'll try to go through that and explain with you.
What section is that you're on?
Section nine. Jerry's got the map and that, of the regional one. And it cuts off and it's much easier if I go on to one of that, this is a drainage map from the county up here, your second number, I guess it. And then if I go to my land, to the soil map, it's probably the easiest one to explain. And this is the eighty acres. Up here in the corner, this is cut down across, this is the sinkwell that was, they brought a tile up to. Between Denzel, Weemers, and Lawrence Davis. That green area is nickelat soil, that's high soil. That yellow is clarion, that is a two to five percent slope. And that red is rock, which you know the slope is to that hole, the lower ground. All this ground slopes to the east, none of it slopes other direction.
What part are they trying, what part are they trying to include in there, Ron?
They're including all this area.
The whole area.
And only that little green area is all that should be included in that. And I have that completely, was completely tiled out before we ever started this. My tile line goes down, connects to the can, goes around to an eighteen that goes into the ditch a half mile before the bulkhead, before you even started. So, all this land that was taken into the drainage district and Rick Hopper agreed, if you go out there, this all slopes to the east, none of it slopes to the west. So the only part that goes west is that little tiny part that would be nickelat soil up in the corner.
And this is always been in a little part up there?
That's always been.
They're gonna extend it down far as?
They have a green here, look at your.
Yeah, I gave it.
Yeah, I see it here now.
They go clear down around, into that corner.
Oh, there you go.
On that other map, there you go.
There you go.
There's the boundary of it. And it comes clear down, taking forty some acres instead of coming across this corner. It's plain as can be, you can even look on the, go on the soil map on the computer and you can just see the ridge there where it all drains other direction, none of it drains that direction. Rick Hopper agreed, but he never took care of it. Evidently, I wasn't here when you had that other debate and then I got the information of what I was assessing.
Stuff like this?
Yes, yes, yeah, copies of it. Originally, I was assessed even for the forty-three acres, is what it totals, five hundred and sixty-one dollars. And now I just got my new report, it jumped to three thousand, yeah, three thousand one hundred and six dollars and fifty-seven cents. So I went from five hundred and sixty-one dollars to over three thousand dollars.
Okay.
Something is not right. Also went and looked at on this sheet of other land around me that the tile did go in, that the main was even in, and some of theirs didn't even go up, but maybe decreased a few dollars. And I'm talking people with, I looked at large quantities, some of them were eighteen thousand dollars. Their stayed almost even, and mine went up this much, I have no, something not correct.
Okay.
And so, uh, I'll try to be here when we have that other meeting, but it just, I think it's totally inappropriate and not correct, so I guess that's, that's where I'm at, that's what I came about, so.
Well, I'm glad you came before the hearing again.
And I met with Rick Ho- Hopper and he agreed that that was the case, but for some reason, his government, and that's right now. And I met with Carl Mattis when it, when it first came up. And showed him this information too, so thank you for listening.
Okay, thanks for coming in.
We'll be here again today, so we'll talk to him.
He could be here anyway, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, it was twenty-eight hundred on one parcel, total of two hundred and thirty-nine on the other.
Right.
So that's the last current we got, that's the one he gave us, so they could show him the same things.
Yeah, we just got that.
Oh, you just got yourselves, okay. Okay, we'll talk to Rick about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, we're right on time, let's, um, most go into drainage, I guess. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are in drainage. Several items this morning.
I haven't seen Rick's body yet.
No, if he goes out there.
Did he talk out there?
I don't know, I just can't.
How did you think about it, does he know we're on errands tonight?
I didn't see it.
Let's take a look. Well, I should have, is everybody pick up on you?
I think so.
Really? Great. I think he's here. Do you? Alright, maybe.
He's probably here, he's hiding.
Maybe the press wants to report on the semifinals and final four. Why wouldn't that blow up?
I mean, the whole tournament, the first hour was good, the rest of the games have been pretty much runaways.
I'll bet you.
His files must have looked so bad after seeing.
Right.
Yeah, we'll be in a tough one to swallow for a long time.
There's been a lot of tough games this one this year. Yeah, it really is.
Who's got one?
I never stayed, so I was pretty much.
No.
Hey, Rick?
Hi, Jerry.
My brother's got them all, that's pretty.
Well, that one, there's not a lot to go through today, it looks like.
Yeah, oh no, nothing serious.
So I guess we'll start with DD eleven.
Okay. We went through this same type of thing here not too long ago where we've got several reclassifications for you. And what you see here is the summation for each of them and starts, the first one is eleven extension, it's the yellow paper, I think there's six pages there. Are they in a particular order on the agenda?
Eleven's first.
Eleven's first.
It is first, okay.
What we'll do is we'll, I'll just briefly summarize this. These were part of the DD eleven area. Since we were reclassifying eleven, you authorized reclassification of several districts that fell within eleven. And this is just the extension of eleven, it's the very upper end, kinda southwest of Addison, is how I'd describe it. We've allowed eighty-five hundred dollars to be spread, um, and, uh, I'd like to refer to the last sheet just because it shows the overall average of two dollars and eight cents an acre, uh, is what this one costs. So it was pretty minor cost, a lot of them are just a dollar something an acre. And just, and I'll do it for this one, then you'll have, have it for yours. Basically, we use the soils for our basis to start from. That has a lot to do with need for drainage and benefit from drainage. And then we use, we do have been applying what we're calling a proximity factor. If you're some distance away from the county system, we give you a small reduction. If you're further away, more reduction, if you have to cross a road, another deduction. It doesn't get anybody really low, but it allows for them having to tile further to get an outlet. So those factors were all applied to this. This is Pat and Brent, right, Pat Hill and Brent Keenest, again, so, um, they've had a lot of experience with it. And that's, I've enjoyed that because with that's, working with them, we've developed this proximity factor that we can apply pretty well equally to different districts. I think uniformity is one big key in anybody fighting a reclassification. So we've tried to develop that. Right, that's correct. That's the way most of these are. And the idea was that since we had the soils work and everything pulled together for eleven, it wouldn't take a lot for these districts, and then you'll have a kind of, already here, already got the factors. Well, when you can get it down to two dollars and eight cents an acre, that's, that's pretty reasonable. So it'll be a matter of, uh, setting hearings for these as we go. And I'm sure want Trish's input as far as notification, 'cause she's been working on two, I know, which is a huge one.
Even the four thousand, only four thousand acres, that came out pretty cheap.
Yeah, 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 it really did. So, um, we're looking at forty days, I hadn't even looked at the calendar to see when that would be, but, uh.
You have to know, maybe ninth, I suppose, or at least, or more. You want a little more time than that, Trish?
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
Yeah, 'cause there's a lot of them, that's why.
'Cause I still have.
Probably do these all at once, so, maybe sixteen. How about, you wanna wait till, like, 'cause there's nothing serious about doing these.
No, no, there's nothing pushing these.
How about getting to June sixth, first of June? You want a little more? Oh, we'll do that.
Hey, I might ask you a question.
Sure.
Just gonna breathe into these.
Yeah.
Why do secondary roads' costs so much higher than everybody else's?
Uh, use, high use, I guess is what I call it, um. But here in.
Is that why, is it that water runs off the roads?
Yeah, that's a lot of it, impervious. But like this, the one we're looking at, their cost was two dollars and ninety-two cents an acre.
Yeah, and the first is one like two forty or something.
I, I was just. Yeah, yeah, just to, we consider the higher use, um, and then the impervious. Okay, A ground has no impervious, really, to speak of. Yep, yep, so.
Gotcha.
But, uh, yeah, that's the deal.
Amazing how many acres that adds up.
It could be pretty fast.
Yeah, I was kinda shocked how many acres of roads there are. Oh, yeah, it's amazing. Yeah.
Well, I think what we should do is give her enough time, 'cause she's got a lot of things going and, uh, so I'm thinking maybe June twentieth, and there's nothing out there, of course, so she thought we could start, what, eight forty for our first one? And then I think we'll try to do these all on that day if we can.
So you're June twenty?
June twentieth, at eight forty AM, DD eleven extension, is there a motion for that?
Mm-hmm.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Alright. And what would you like to allow for these, Rick, fifteen minutes?
I think that's enough.
Alright, then we'll go that way with the next ones. Alright, I guess we can go to, uh, DD thirty-nine, you're still on the same page here.
Yeah, yeah, so next, it's the white ones, the first white sheet. And it's only, one side just a little on the other, this one's, only has about six hundred and thirteen acres, um.
So that makes the cost great.
Yeah, yeah, that's not a lot of acres to spread it over. So we anticipate a total of something twenty-five hundred dollars or less, so that came off at just over four dollars an acre. Lowest they see is a dollar eighty-eight.
Nobody got really down.
True. Yeah, there it is, okay. Now there's four ninety-eight, but anyway. Pretty reasonable cost, same idea, uh, same reasoning, distance, soils, um, and then you see a result of this. We've got signed report by the commissioners, I haven't signed that today, have I? I'll sign those, so. Okay. So, glad to answer any questions or set a hearing.
I'll make a motion, set the hearing. Accept the reclassification report, set a hearing date for that June twentieth, that.
Nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
Or no? Eight fifty-five.
Eight fifty-five, there you go.
It won't take long.
We're getting ourselves to the next one.
Yeah.
Eight five five, I'll second it.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, Danny, one oh six.
Okay, one oh six is another pretty small one. Eight hundred and sixty-nine acres, um, this one though fell in place pretty fast. We got the average cost down to two dollars and thirty cents an acre, total cost of about two thousand dollars on this one. We tried to allow for what we had in it and the hearing, so that the numbers you see would cover everything. We have less than this in it right now, but, uh, time you get to a hearing, go through the hearing, it adds just a little more time. Same idea, uh, the soils and adjustments and what you see is the results of that.
Alright, so do you want to make a motion for DD nine, one oh six?
I will, we accept the reclassification report and set the hearing date for nine o'clock.
Nine ten?
Nine ten.
June twentieth, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then DD one thirteen.
Okay, that's the.
One of them.
The back?
Yeah.
So on one side, um. And, uh, this one took about twenty-nine hundred dollars, or will have about that much total cost in it. This came out a little bit higher average, um, five dollars and forty-one cents. Still very reasonable, I think, um, as far as the district is concerned. Yeah, same thing, same idea with soils and, and adjustment factors.
Alright, I'll make a motion to accept the reclassification report and set a hearing date for nine.
Twenty-five.
Nine twenty-five, on June twentieth.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all was in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
Okay. I guess the last item is, uh, DD eighty-four.
Okay. Yes, um, here's what we went into, you can go ahead with the repair and just get prices up to a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. But, here's the hangup, you have to have a hearing if it's over fifty thousand.
That's what I was, oh.
Yeah, so here's, which takes time. Yeah, now, it doesn't say it has to be a report, and we can present an oral report right now. But, we do need to basically, um, get that hearing scheduled so we start the clock and then we can do the work as soon as we have the hearing.
There's nobody out there, is there? Thank you, Tom.
I don't see anybody there.
Want to make sure.
This is for the Bradgate?
Yeah, this is Bradgate.
Yeah, this is Bradgate.
We're a few minutes early, that's why, I mean, we can go ahead and talk about it.
Oh, well, in the meantime, I did bring a check today for the laptop service. I don't think there's anything on the agenda, but I think, uh.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, I'm just glad you keep this moving forward.
I mean, this will help, if nobody shows up. Um, we did give a concern, and I'm gonna give you this back.
Okay.
From Ron Rea, and it's on DD two.
Section nine.
Rick, how did, he, he said that you had talked to him?
Oh.
Have you talked to Ron Rea on this?
Been a long time ago.
I don't remember talking about it.
About the concern about that forty some acres being put into that drainage.
Okay.
When there was just a small parcel, he says, we just got maps that show the tile and direction it goes, south instead of north. Rick, you wanna add it up, what else did he say about that?
Well, um, part of it dumps into the, into the lateral, I can't remember which lateral it was, off the top of my head. And he was alright with that, but the other half of the field still dumps into the DD two though, doesn't it? Dumped into the bridge pit, so it should be still part of DD two, but I don't know how, if it got assessed higher, because.
I do not remember talking about it, say you did, but I had. Well, no, he said he talked to Rick.
This has been a long time ago, yeah, yeah. Well, I think we reduced it a lot because of other tiling, um, but I can check that.
Forty acres wasn't in there to begin with or nothing?
Yeah, he said it wasn't included before, then it got included.
He's saying this.
Yeah.
He's saying, uh, this, does that matter? Yeah, he was saying this little piece here was in it before, now he's saying everything this way is in it. And he said this is tiled this direction.
I remember discussions, that was a long time ago as far as the tiling.
Do you think the original assessment?
Was like sixty-one, wasn't it?
Something like, oh, three thousand. The last assessment meter, about five forty, five ninety-five.
Looked like you agreed with him, Matt.
Looking at the top map, it still dumped into the DD two. Well, that, but we'd allow for that being tiled, yeah.
It's still part of the district.
Yeah, it's still a part of the district, but, um, with the tiling that was done, I mean, I believe him, I absolutely believe him, but he still has the right to tie in to two directly. So, um, I'll review it, though.
You know, I, I believe that, what we should do is leave that with you. I'd give him a call before they hear it, 'cause.
Yes, absolutely, yeah. Absolutely, yep.
Yeah, 'cause he has some concerns, 'cause his assessment went from five sixty-one to three thousand dollars or something like that.
Yeah, that's where that lateral I down, or lateral L down below was not getting anything hard.
Right, right.
I know, it bumped that up a lot. And explain to him why that happened.
Yes.
He got a new tile coming up to it with no charge.
Yeah, oh, yeah, previously it was, they were gonna.
And that's why there was a huge increase.
Yes, I would be glad to. And I can.
I can buy his story of being able, you know, he's told me terrain moved the other way.
But his tile, still, water still dumps into the DD two.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
So, I can work with that, definitely, and call him, and we can, you know. Yep. And we can copy this too, as far as.
You have that.
Oh, okay.
He gave us a second.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. The deal. I may have it, okay.
Back to, back to Bradgate.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, Bradgate, um.
Tell nobody else, they're, they're.
Um, what are they, what are they looking at doing for this hundred and thirty-five thousand, what's, what's, what are they? And we're, we're figuring the most it's gonna be is a hundred, actually, but if we're over fifty, we have to do this hearing thing. So, um, we've, we've got a plan drawn up, um. This is the annexation report, I'm gonna ask you to set a date for the annexation to, um.
Oh, is this the additional end that needs to be annexed?
Yes, there's fifty five, fifty-six or fifty-seven acres to the northeast. Okay, this is the road, county, Middle East West County Road through town. Um, whoops, I'm sorry, that's right here.
Up there. This is where that intake is.
Yeah, yes, and that's where the pump's setting.
And I, more to all scenes.
Yep, there's a pump there with the hose running down here.
Yeah.
Yep, and there's a, there's an intake in one of these backyards that's taking water, good. And there's an intake down here that they're pumping into that's taking water really well. So what we've done is we've worked out a route to get there, get away from the trees, get away from the old main, and it takes seven hundred and thirty-four feet of pipe.
To go from where to where, Rick?
To go right where the pump is.
To down there.
Because down below the intake is taking water so well down there. Now, we have dumped dye in this intake down here, and it does come out the outlet. We thought there might be some complete blockage or nearly complete, and it comes out enough, you can actually see the flow, so that's good. So the total project would be this, plus like a hundred feet of opening up the outlet. Uh, we may just take the pipe out that's there. There's a tree that needs to come down.
Yeah, I see that big old tree hanging over it.
Yeah, yes. So that tree has to come out, and we wanna be sure that tile is open.
It's down at the roof, it's down, down.
Yeah.
Right at the, yeah, yeah.
There's an old bulkhead down there.
Might be part of that.
Yes, that's correct, so. Now, the thing is, this water isn't gonna drop enough to do this project, probably for the forty days. We're not delaying, no. If we had somebody go in there now, it'd cost twice as much, if they could even do it.
My biggest concern would be is if we're considering plastic as a lower cost item, there's no way you could put plastic in.
No, oh, it'd float terribly.
And you wanna get this foot in right.
Yeah.
You can't do it when it's.
Yeah, we wanna do it and be done.
So one time you talked about doing an open ditch, Reese.
Too sandy, I think.
Has it come out here locally?
Yeah, it's, they, they say that you'd hit a saturated sand level down near the bottom of the ditch and you wouldn't be able to hold the bottom or anything.
Now, the question I have, could you even go like a three-foot ditch from this in, intake down to this pipe and just let its surface water run down? Um, but, you know, then go back into the tile.
The, the problem is, the tile is like, we're like, seven feet deep here somewhere. So I mean, that would take whatever surface water got for this intake.
Get started.
Yeah, you'd have to get that low to actually take it off.
Get it to go all the way north out.
That's maybe we're thinking about as, as overflow.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, just to help them out.
That the tile couldn't take it, uh-huh.
But are they pumping outlet right now, Ron, Rick?
Yeah, yeah, that's something that, I came by there this morning, 'cause I was really curious.
We gotta go up that way at four noon, so maybe we'll see what's going on.
Yes.
Boy, the water table runs it out, heck of a time.
Oh.
Put something in up there.
Oh, yeah.
In that sandy ground.
Yeah, it's gonna be a while.
This is gonna be, definitely be a summer project.
Yeah, that's, you'd wanna, what I'm looking at is if we get a big rain, what happens is all that rain from up on top of that hill comes down and it comes out these intakes and just boils into the town. Yeah. And it just fills the town full of water, so I thought if we would dig a ditch down there, at least it could, even if it's a three-foot ditch, deep ditch, it could run down there. And basically it'd help these pumps off, these pumps, they're still pumping.
They're not ruined.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, even the three-inch pumps.
Yeah, it's nothing compared to a twenty-four inch tile.
That's right, that's right.
Have you talked to you at all lately, or nobody? Any kind of response?
No, nothing recently, no.
And I had someone talk to me about some concerns that they think maybe even the blockage could be just up close to the street.
We think there is some there. Yeah, we do.
You know, rather than a hundred percent just the roots and stuff, there might be some blockage up there.
Yeah, yeah.
Wouldn't it be worth it, time, putting one of them jets on it and see if you can blow that out? Oh, it's too big, alright.
Yeah.
So, when you stay out by the street, are you standing on the south side of the street, or the?
I'm, we're thinking the south side is where there might still be some blockage. And we'll get that all exposed and opened up to put the structure in. And this, I, this ended up just kinda accidentally, we have to put a pretty good sized structure here, so we're gonna make that an intake also, and it'd be a point where the new B comes in, yeah, there'll be a.
So there'll be a box pulling in B and.
Yeah. Just taking the main from the north, and then here it can go into either the old main or the new main. And you can see in that structure to see what's going on. We're leaving an open top. Uh, probably a seven-foot diameter, I mean, it's a big one. Because of, because of the angles that some of this comes in at, um, we're actually gonna have to divert this new branch B a little bit to get it so you don't have an enormous structure there, because the pipes are coming at such same angle.
It's necessary to make this right, that's what the main issue is.
Yes, yes, you can, you can see then, in the future, you just take the, the small lid off with the openings in it, look in there, see if the water's coming good from the north, see if it's coming from B flying. Yeah, you can see how well it's outletting into the new system, that it's not backing up. I mean, it'd be a tremendous reference point for future observation, just as part of this project. Um, since you need that structure anyway, uh, we'll try and position it so it'll work as an intake, um, also have that opening on the top, so.
Sounds like you got a good plan for long term. Why don't you do it in the short term?
Well, I got a question.
Sure.
I'm not a hundred percent sure that the blockage, I wonder if it ain't mostly here? I wonder sometimes if we shouldn't dig that up before we get too in depth, um, or what?
Well, um, let me relieve your minds a little.
Yeah, I'd like that.
Because, everybody said how expensive this is gonna be? No, no, I, I, and, um, we've gotten through the reclassification already. I have not never-
How many total acres?
I've, I've got it, I've got it.
How many total acres is this?
This total acres is seven hundred and eighty-nine.
Is that with the?
With the fifty-six point something, yes.
And that's gonna add about fifty-six?
Yes, um, well, I should just give these to you before I start handling them. This represents, I'm sorry, I got, my, my mind just going-
It's gonna be a minute to get set.
In the office, we were just pleasantly surprised at how this was coming out, residential property, oh, sorry. Um, the-
Oh, yeah, this is a lot different what we were, uh-
Oh, yeah.
What he was worried about.
If you go down halfway on the first page, you can start seeing where it's lots and blocks listed, like lot four, block three. Look over at their assessment, fifty-eight dollars, sixty-one, forty-seven. So, individual lots-
Somewhere three hundred and fifty, but you know, you're getting to the plaque.
There'd be bigger stuff.
But I mean, yeah, that's still a reasonable number.
Yeah, you can look on that second page, the, um, it is mostly lots and blocks there.
And the three, a lot of them in three and a half inches.
Well, and that's the cost per acre. Look at the, yeah, total assessment, yeah, look at the total assessment like-
Second one from the right.
Is what their dollars and cents would be.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and I, we can make more copies.
And I mean, some of these people own three, four lots, but at least they ain't thousands.
Yes, yes.
That kind of investment, she would say the foundation.
Oh, did she say it's pushing in fifty-eight dollars versus filling your basement?
Even told six hundred a month utility bills some of them have.
That ain't gonna happen.
From running four-
And air conditioning.
Some pumps.
Yeah, some pumps, so, um-
Well, that helps having that other time.
Yeah, that's, that's-
This project is better for us to know these numbers.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
One out east of town.
That's right, that's absolutely right. And I got, here, um, as an example, uh, Brant Hoy owns a lot of ground in town, I mean, a lot. Um, and his total assessment for everything would be twenty-two hundred and fourteen dollars. And he can pay that over ten years, I mean, if he wants to, since it's over five hundred dollars.
He's probably gonna move half the town.
Yeah, that's right, he is-
A few more acres in there, and it's probably why those fifty-six will be at, I mean, four maybe?
Yes, before anything is levied, and I've got that report to submit today.
So you're probably wanting to, you know, get that report done before we do the repair part, is that?
Oh, it doesn't have to be, but we need the annexation taken care of so that it can be formally included in the reclassification.
So it's out of the way.
Yes, I do too. Now, I, it was ironic, I, I met with a Martin Zaug, um, last week or the week before. He's up by, he has about a drainage issue up at West Den, and he said, uh, uh, yeah, we have a lot of land draining into Bradgate. It's like, oh, okay, I hadn't looked at names yet, so there he was in office. So I added up his, um, and his total is seventeen thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Right.
Uh, so they're paying like seventeen percent, yeah, yep, paying quite a bit going in, so, um-
Well, let's look at the calendar here.
You know, technically it's all that land uphill that's coming down and flooding.
That's right.
And it comes down fast.
It comes down fast.
That's right, because we, we did quite a bit of observation of the west end of the county system, right in town there. And the intake on the very end wasn't taking water because it was being filled by the water coming from the north.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they, they need to pay, uh, their share, so. So I don't know how you have it on the agenda as far as the-
How do we got?
The annexation.
We got to accept annexation report instead of hearing.
No, let's schedule it.
Schedule here.
For the annexation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Schedule the repairs.
Oh, yeah, 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 good.
Yeah, we gotta schedule, I suppose we gotta do it in order.
Yeah, we should. So we need forty days for that, right? Probably, so forty-two days would be May sixteenth, does that sound right? Then we better go out. May twenty-third, that'd be far enough out, Rick?
Oh, yeah, this, this should be thoroughly non-county filled.
We're gonna have to find out, so it's not like we're here to deal with it. So, could we get, we could get close ready before this date?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we have to work on that wording, because what we're gonna do is, yeah, because we want to be sure the contractor knows that we're gonna give them, say, up to sixty days or something to allow to, for a dry period for the installation, so. We're gonna try and get our interest established ahead of that, and then have the contractor comfortable with the timing.
We got May sixteenth, we give you six weeks from today, so let's do that. Would that be good?
On the sixteenth now?
Yeah, let's do May sixteenth.
I should have never wrote that.
That would be for the hearing. That would be for the hearing on the repair.
On the, okay.
So this is D eighty-four. Somebody wanna make a motion for that? We'll probably set it at like nine o'clock, just to get about a little bit later.
I'll make a motion to May sixteenth at nine AM.
Mm-hmm.
And that's eighty-four?
I reckon we heard this motion. Okay, we have a motion, and we do have a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
And then, um, benefit commissioners?
Yeah, I need somebody to review my, my, uh, reclass work, so, yeah.
We're gonna start meeting today, so.
Oh, okay, okay. So, um, is, is the commissioners thing the next thing on the agenda?
Yeah, it's the next thing on the agenda.
And I, I guess, I think we're fine with Pat and Brent on this army. I haven't seen their names in anything. Um, all right, I'll make a motion to hire Patty and Brent Keen as for commissioners. The president, but I'll run this while he's absent. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Excellent.
Okay, now we gotta accept annexation report. That's what I just put in front of you there, um, the fifty, I think it's fifty-seven something, fifty-seven point four nine acres. Yep, yep, and, uh, you can get yourself oriented fairly well with that drawing in the back. Um, shows Bradgate. The majority of it's in section five there, just northeast of Bradgate.
That's that white blue stuff?
Yep, yep, white blues, blue, um, areas is what we're adding. And how this came up was we recently reclassified drainage district number seven. As part of seven, we worked out the boundary all the way around it using topography. So, we had the common boundary between seven and eighty-four, and by using the one we've established now, these acres need to be added, so. It should be pretty straightforward, um, yeah. I haven't looked at who the owners are, that didn't matter to us, so. Anyone looks like you brought up three.
I think there's three.
There are four different owners, yeah. So, yeah, this is, we, the forty days also, um, requirement for an annexation hearing.
How long do you think this other hearing will be?
Eighty-four.
Yeah. What about, is this a preliminary engineering report or is it just hearing?
Hearing, no, just call it the hearing on proposed repairs, yeah. Cause that's how the code kinda reads. First, I'll need a motion to accept the annexation report.
Yep.
I'd move to make accept a report, annexation. Eighty-four or?
DD eighty-four. Oh, you need a second? Second, second for John. All in favor?
Aye.
I apologize for that ask, but we just-
I was checking something out.
Alright, so we accept that.
Down to setting the hearing date.
Oh, what's the hearing date gonna be on?
Well, she was checking to see what, how long eighty-four was, right?
How long that's up there. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Could we do it the same day as what she-
Oh, yeah, I should think so.
Yeah.
Um, it's just a matter of how much discussion there is for DD eighty-four on the repairs. And this, the preliminary reclassification will help our discussion.
That will help a lot, yes, yes.
So that'll be available for people to look at for that, so it isn't like they're coming full turkey on the annexation.
Right, that's right, correct.
Okay.
It'd be nice even to get some of those out to the people. How can we do that?
Uh, let me just schedule something with Pat and Brent soon, um, I mean, it's factors we've established together, so I, I think it'd be, go fairly quickly as far as us meeting. I'm hoping for the one meeting season.
I know, that's why we need to do it quickly, yeah.
We need to set that date, May fourth, I mean, sixteenth also.
E- yeah, yeah, it's a matter of the time.
How much time? Well, I wonder if we shouldn't do that before the repair part?
Oh.
If we're gonna do it the same day, would that be all right?
Just switch it up.
Put it up ahead for time wise?
Yeah, let's put it at eight forty-five.
Uh, that's, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
That way we can approve the repairs after.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's get it done.
So that would be eight forty-five AM, DD eighty-four, and this would be to accept or to, um, set the hearing date for the annexation report.
Yeah, what you're doing now is setting the hearing on it, yep.
Right.
I'd move to accept the annexation, hearing report for eight forty-five on May sixteen.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
So that's where we can go ahead and go through the annexation explain and make sure everybody's clear on it. You'll have those numbers out ahead of time, so we'll get some questions answered, and then we can-
Yes.
Go into, because repair might take some time.
I think it could.
And I would wanna leave, I think, you better maybe let, make the next thing at nine thirty, nothing before nine thirty, because I think we better leave a half hour for that, just in case.
No, it'll be, I think there'll be some people coming on, so talk about it.
I think so too.
So that's for eighty-four and I?
Yeah, the, the repair discussion will be at nine, but at eight forty-five, we'll do the report, the annex report.
Annexation, yeah.
So we can let them know that they'll get you guys left off. All right, with that, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it's done. Well, that's all of that. Now, before we go to close session, which Ron can wait, Ron's back, you, Ron?
Oh, Ron.
We did a little bit with, um, Rick, and he remembers the conversation, so why don't you go ahead and have, you want to?
Yeah, and I, I might need a little bit of review yet.
Okay.
Uh, but, but hearing that's down to you, I need to go speak to taking equipment.
Ron, if you don't mind, I'll let you guys handle it. Are there, are there?
Yeah, and I need, I probably need to review this a little yet, and how we handled it for the, but your input here would be, the input down here, there's the bulkhead.
Okay.
So I was already cleared. This is the sinkwell you came up and touched.
Uh-huh.
I have nothing going into that, if you can see.
Yep, I see, yep, saw that, okay.
And here's where I'm going in, and then it's circling down here, and I was before the bulkhead.
Uh-huh.
Nickelat, sorry.
Uh-huh.
Three to five percent slope.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Yeah.
So you know it's sloping.
Uh-huh.
It's just open down here, it's, uh, where that, where the drain is.
Door hearing.
Yeah, well, you should be near the tile.
See, I got it all tiled.
Okay, okay.
Coming out here, circles up here, coming down, it comes in below the bulkhead, already in there.
Okay.
So-
I think it's moving slower.
So- We have nothing going into that, and that's the high ground on my, on my, this is the high ground on all this whole farm.
This is even?
Yeah, that's nickelat.
Yeah.
That's good soil, there's thirty-eight, there's a high spot here, and here too.
Uh-huh. Okay.
If anything, that could even drain there, but I, but if it goes that way, I, you know.
Okay, then I'll work with the-
But here's the, here's the boundaries of your, of your- And here's your numbers, okay? Of this.
There's a good floor.
There's the line.
Oh, I see, okay.
So here with the sinkwell here.
In the county, it looked good.
And-
Okay, yeah, I'll check our topography there.
Here's where you can really see where you brought me down, when it should be clear up here. You see that light spot? It can't be past that.
Okay.
See that light area?
Uh-huh.
That would be the maximum it would be. And it's right down along here.
Oh, yeah.
For some reason, this looks like we tried to establish a boundary here of water flow.
I'll see how, what we used to do that.
And that's what I talked to you recently. I came to you before we ever-
Yeah, oh, yeah, I told him, I remember. It's been a long time ago, but I remember the conversation. You saying you had things tiled this way.
Right, well, that's why it soaks, and so it's all tiled that way. And see, we're hooking in, you know, we're hooking, here's the bulkhead, and that we're, we're down here, half mile, little over a half mile.
Mm-hmm.
Or quarter mile.
All I really need to check is how we arrived at this line. Uh, uh, and I don't know.
Then, this is what probably, I was gone when you had this meeting. You know, that was a, except for the lot, and people didn't accept it. So I saw them out, and I said, well, I don't care, it's only five hundred and sixty-one out, I'll pay it. You must have taken that into consideration by choosing it.
Whether you did or you didn't, I don't know. What happened is, we, we did let lateral L by way too easily because it had tile all the way up here. Some of this ground, I mean, was really improved drainage, with this being new and this being new.
But then when you redone this, what happened?
Yeah, that was, that was, um-
But I went to three thousand from five hundred.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm, I'm not surprised if it was not allowed for the drainage patterns, because these were very low in the original one. This, these numbers and the ones below you were very low.
I hardly take anything in, so.
And that's, and I'll just verify that with our elevations and what's going on there. Uh, and we can, we'll come back with an adjusted or recommend, recommended adjustment for this.
But I looked at some of this around here, and some of these that had the main going through it didn't hardly change from previous time.
That's right, because they were paying higher originally.
But I'm not listed in lateral.
L?
No.
Okay.
I'm not in that, see?
Yeah, you're not in lateral I up here.
No.
No, no, you don't have anything you're paying towards there.
See, I'm straight to the main only.
Yes, yes, that's the main only, um, yeah, I, I'm, I'm just gonna verify what's going on with the contours, and then we'll probably need to talk, especially if it's any different than, than what I'm thinking now, so, um-
But e- even if it wasn't, that difference in amount is, is way more than what the area around any of it went.
Well, the, should be the ones down to the southwest of you should have gone up a lot. A little bit to the west of you should have gone up quite a bit, and I've got numbers for that, uh, cause that was one of the last-
Because the rest of this all goes this direction to this.
Uh-huh, uh-huh, yes.
Which is not in the drainage district.
Right, yes, you're right, yeah. Yeah, this is the overall boundary for two. What our problem is, is the internal boundary for lateral L, it looks like, so. What's your cell phone?
I don't have cell.
Oh, okay.
Three, three, two, nineteen seventy-one.
I'm sure I have that on the file, but-
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Okay, and I'll leave those.
Will you guys work on that?
Yes, I'll work on this, and we'll talk again and, and, uh, and see if we still have any issues after we've done the review of it, so. Thank you, yes.
All right, you indicate a motion to go on again.
Still move.
Second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, you're out of drainage, thank you, guys. We'll have to go back in session, then we'll go to a close session for a few minutes, and we'll take too long, and then we'll be back.
We have actual annexation.
Yes, mm-hmm, yes. Thank you, guys.
Chris, or Trish, is that your comment?
I don't, do you need?
Oh, okay, okay.
Do you have one?
Oh, let you keep it.
Very good.
Yeah, you'll probably get it back. Unless you want that.
I don't know, yeah, I might.
Yeah.
I have one.
Oh, you have one, okay. All right. You're cleaning up. This is always busy, isn't it?
Yeah.
Isn't it? Yes, it is. All right. We aren't too terribly far behind, so, need a motion to go in close session. Still move to the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.